Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,233rd Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat and/or vacating petitions. Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call a roll.
Mrs. Dinaro?
Here.
Mr. Bonjero?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Droz?
Here.
Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Karen Magna is here. Chairman Wolschop?
Is here. Also with tonight, we have Jacob Uhazi, and we also have Stephanie Reese, both from our Planning Department. They will assist us along with this meeting. And for those in the audience who have never been to one of our meetings, the format is that we will start by reading out each of these two petition items that are on our agenda. Our staff will give background information about the petition to us, and then we'll get the petitioner up, we'll ask questions of the petitioner, and then if there's anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against, they'll have an opportunity to speak before we make our decision. So with that, we're going to go to the public hearing section of our agenda, item number one.
Petition 2025-06-02-13 submitted by 3CS Schoolcraft LLC requesting waiver use approval under sections 3.16 and 6.32 of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended to operate an indoor recreational facility, impact mentoring martial arts at 37461 Schoolcraft Road located at the southwest corner of Schoolcraft Road and Newburgh Road in northeast quarter of section 30.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Uhazi?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a request to operate an indoor recreational facility offering classes in Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu for children and adults. The location is on the southwest corner of Schoolcraft and Newburgh Road. The existing site contains a 12,000-square-foot multi-tenant industrial building. The petitioner's unit would measure 1,900 square feet. The property measures approximately 1.19 acres in size, and the existing zoning is M1 industrial, or light industrial. The adjacent properties to the east is a commercial building containing a wheel-bearing business, also zoned M1. To the west is at Office Park, zoned M2. To the south is Trinity Elite Sports Performance, zoned M1. And to the north is Schoolcraft Road and the Interstate 96 freeway. The site has 320 feet of frontage on Schoolcraft Road and an additional 162 feet of frontage on Newburgh. Site access is provided from Newburgh Road on the southeast side of the property and from Schoolcraft Road on the northwest side of the property. And there is a dumpster enclosure in the southwest corner of the property. The site plan submitted shows the tenant's unit and the interior of the building. Indoor recreation uses are treated as a waiver use in the M1 district under section 6.32 of the zoning ordinance. The proposed indoor recreational use would conform to all special requirements and regulations under this section. Minimum parking is one space for 200 feet of floor area. The suite is approximately 1,900 square feet, requiring 10 parking spaces. The martial arts school will share a lot with two other tenants. Currently, there are 45 parking spaces around the building and approximately 15 spaces along the west property line. This totals of 60 parking spaces on site. The floor plan shows the suite will contain an exercise room, a break room, and two restrooms with a utility closet. The petitioner is not extending the width of the existing building or extending the height or changing any of the setbacks. The elevation plans show the facade with a dark brown brick and brown awning, and the rear facade having a light beige brick and maroon awning over the exits. With that, Mr. Chairman, I have some communications to read as well.
Yes, if you'd like to read the correspondence.
From the City Engineering Office, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver at this time, but would like to note the following items. One, subject parcel is assigned in the address range of 37453 through 37463 Schoolcraft Road, with the address of 37453 Schoolcraft Road being assigned to the overall parcel. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact this department once approvals have been obtained. Two, the existing parcel is currently serviced by public sanitary sewer and water main, as well as private stormwater. Utility information has not been submitted with the drawing, but we do not believe there will be any adverse effects from the proposed project. Three, should any revisions to the utility service to the building or any work of the right-of-way be required, the owner will need to submit drawings to the department to determine if engineering permits will be required." This is signed David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From the Fire Department, "The office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with the renovation and use of the property located at the above referenced address. No objections to this proposal with the stipulation. If a sprinkler, fire suppression system, and fire alarm or alarm monitoring system is in place, the system must remain and be maintained to function as designed. A further detailed review will take place when the division receives an official plan set." Signed Brian Kukula, Fire Marshal. From the Police Department, "I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have no objections to the proposal." Signed Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. From the Treasury Office, "All taxes have been paid on this property." Signed Susie Nash, City Treasurer. And that is all I have for this petition.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Uhazi. Is there any questions for our planning staff? No questions for the staff. Our petitioner is in the audience. Feel free to come to one of our podiums and introduce yourself. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for being here and being a part. Thank you so much.
And we just need your name and address, business address is fine for your, for the record.
Sure. My first name is James, my last name is Gray, and the business address is 37461 Schoolcraft Road, that's Livonia, Michigan, 48150.
Okay, very good. And you can pull the mic up if you need to, to make it, we don't get neck, neck pain. So tell us a little bit about your proposal. You want to put a martial arts studio in this facility? Tell us what you'd like to do.
Yes, sir. So we impact young kids, so have a class that's geared towards younger kids, like so that it would be from ages five to 10. And then from ages 10 to about 16, they'll have a big, we'll have a bigger class, for a big kids' class. And then hopefully by the time that they're 16, they'll start to be involved with the adults, where my student leaders that are adults will be able to pour into them. You know, making leaders out of the younger kids is really what, what our goal is. But also, we build business people and things of that sort. So I have a group of engineers, I have a group of police officers, I have a lot of different people, even professional fighters that'll come in and train. And so we have a wide array of different types of students.
Okay, very good. Let's see if there's any questions for you about your petition. One second.
Sir.
Is there anyone with questions? Ms. Dinaro, first.
Can you, can you tell us a little bit about your current studio and why you're moving to Livonia?
Yes, ma'am. Well, so I've been through this process a few times. We were in Belleville previously, prior to COVID, and unfortunately, we had to shut down during that time. It was kind of a crazy time, right? And then we decided that it would probably be better to move to Canton, so we moved to Canton. And it has been wonderful. So for the last four and a half years, we've been in a storefront, and unfortunately, the rent's real super high, and the landlord wouldn't necessarily fix the leaks that were happening. And so as a leader, I take real great pride in where locationally we are. And so I really wanted to provide a good place for my students to train. And so this would be, this is a better fit for us. And so that's why, that's the purpose of why we wanted to relocate.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Dinaro. Mr. Droz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to talk a little bit about the parking on your property.
Sure, yes, sir.
So I guess one of the more interesting things, as a planning commissioner, I guess, of having young kids is that I've learned that there's a lot of these recreational uses that are in some of our industrial areas, and, which is great, because, you know, obviously I'd rather have those spaces be used, and, and it gives amenities and activities for the kids. But one thing I have noticed is sometimes they can get pretty busy if there's a, you know, sometimes there'll be a party or, you know, other types of events that happen. And I'm not asking so much about that, but what I am wondering is, because one of the points on the report that we have is that you're going to get a shared parking agreement in place as part of this project. And so one of the things I'd like to see is to make sure that you have enough spaces allocated, because sometimes it can get a little cramped, and all of a sudden, you've got to park in an adjacent space and walk maybe in a spot that's not designed for it. So, kind of, what is kind of your upper expectation for number of parking spaces you need for, you know, a busy day at your facility?
So the adults would be training later, right? So they're training at 7:00, typically the adults when they, when they train, and so that would be after business hours? And so, yes, we would have shared parking, but the time lapse that, you know, I mean, typically, it'll, it'll be a ghost town during that time.
So I guess my question, though, is if, so if you've got a 6:00 session and a 7:00 session, and everybody shows up at the same time, is 10 spaces enough, or do you think you need a little bit more than that?
I think, I think 10 would be fine, because we get a lot of people that'll, like, drop their kids off and then come back and pick them up, and so there's a good amount of people that do that.
Okay.
And so, and then the adults would be later, so they would be the ones parking. So, I mean, I have, usually I have about, honestly, I have about maybe seven or eight parents that would stay and watch their kids, but, you know, once they, once they go and they leave, now those spaces are vacant. So it's, it's pretty much an open ghost town from there.
All right.
As far as parking goes.
No further questions. It's a great project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Droz. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magna?
Hello. How long have you been in business?
Since, well, for, as a professional martial artist, since 2017.
Okay, so you've been, you've been a while, and you said you were Belleville, Canton, now you're coming to Livonia?
Yes, sir. We, basically, we, I had the Van Buren Township. I would offer private lessons at Van Buren Township. I knew some of the people there, and I grew up with them, so I'm a Belleville graduate and everything. And then they expressed interest that they wanted a self-defense program for the kids. So I offered it. I asked my instructor, who is the first black belt in the state. I said, "Do you think it's a good idea?" And then we basically, he said, "Yeah, I think it's a great, great fit." And so I started doing that. And then I partnered with a karate school briefly, and grew my student base. And then we ended up renting our own facility, and we have great relationships with them still. But then, basically, that's when we kind of started impact mentoring, because we didn't want it to be just a normal martial arts school. We wanted to really get into the lives of some of the younger kids, and into the lives of even some traditional martial artists that have been black belts for a long time, but they might not know Jiu-Jitsu. So Jiu-Jitsu is our expertise.
Okay, what are your hours?
So, well, we're, we might change, change it up a little bit, but the main thing is, is like, so 5:00 PM would be, actually, excuse me, 5:15 will be our kids' class. 6:00 PM would be our big kids' class, and then 7:00 PM would be our adults' class. And that's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and, and then obviously, we do Saturday morning and Sunday, and Sunday classes, too. And so.
Each class is about an hour?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you for your question.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magna. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Gray, at our study session, you told us that you moved into the, you rented the space and paid the rent and moved into the building, and improved the building, and started to operate, and then discovered, and the landlord had never said anything to you about requiring this waiver use and going through the process you're now going through, so then you discovered you needed to do it and had to shut down and start this process. And so you're still in a state of kind of suspended animation at this point, waiting for this approval?
We're, our, our main goal is to make sure that we get our certificate of occupancy and go through the process. We went through the certificate of occupancy process in Belleville. We went through the certificate process in Canton, and now I look forward to doing the certificate here in Livonia. I heard, heard it's a smoother process, so.
And you've done everything inside the building you need to do to make it ready for your business? It's just a matter of...
Yeah, I mean, you know, what was really cool about this particular spot is that it's already ready, so I didn't have to really do anything except for paint. So it's, and we're, we're looking to put like a water cooler as opposed to like a drinking fountain, so that way we don't have to break into any walls or do anything like that, anything major. So that way, it's a little bit more straightforward, and hopefully, we get the approval from, from building on that, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gray. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for the petitioner? I don't see any other questions from my colleagues. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anyone else wishing to speak. Mr. Gray, is there anything else you'd like to tell us before we make our decision?
No, I really appreciate your time, and I know it's a little bit of a process trying to get the waiver use, and so I, I just wanted to thank everybody here for your time and listening to, we talk, us talk about our business, and so I appreciate it.
Definitely. It's an opportunity to, for you to promote your business a little bit in the process as you go through, you know, this approval process. You know, people are going to be watching and listening, and maybe they hear something that's interesting to them, so.
Yes, sir.
With that in mind, if there's no other comments from any of my colleagues or anyone else in the audience, I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion will be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
We have Ms. Dinaro first.
Yeah, I'd like to offer an approving resolution. The request to operate an indoor recreational facility, impact Jiu-Jitsu at 37461 Schoolcraft Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval, and the following conditions. One, the site plan identified as A100 dated June 9, 2025 is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Two, that the building elevation plan identified as A102 dated June 9, 2025, as revised, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Three, only conforming signs are approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Four, all parking spaces, except the required handicap spaces, shall be double striped at 10 feet wide by 20 feet in length, as required. And five, under section 13 dot 1.3 of the Livonia zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for one year only from the date of approval by the City Council. Unless the appropriate permits are obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
One moment. Is there support?
Support.
Mr. Ventura's finger, I beat you.
He can have it.
Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Dinaro, I'd like, at the, at the study session, we talked about accelerating this process for this petitioner, so that he wouldn't go through the waiting time, in as much as he's shut down, kind of waiting for this approval. So I'd like to ask the petitioner, the maker of the motion, if we can amend the motion to include that.
We can, we can do that as a separate motion or discussion after we approve this, this one?
Fine.
Well, we'll get there in one, one second. Thank you, Mr. Ventura, for remembering that. We have a motion on the floor to approve by Ms. Dinaro, supported by Mr. Ventura. Is there any discussion? If not, the secretary is ready, please call a roll.
Mrs. Dinaro?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Droz?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Wolschop?
Votes aye. Motion passes. That will go to City Council in approving recommendation for you. Now, Mr. Ventura has raised the question of a seven-day waiver of our minutes. Mr. Uhazi, have you had an opportunity to see if that would assist them?
Yes, we did look at that, but unfortunately, it's not so much that we can't do it, it's just that the way the council agenda falls, they're not going to get on a sooner agenda, whether we have the seven days or the normal waiting period. So either way, they'd end up on the same.
The same date.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Ventura, are you okay with that?
Evidently, there's not much we can do. It's a couple months.
Mr. Gray, just for your benefit, as I mentioned at the beginning of, of the meeting in our, my preamble, there's a seven-day waiting period before our minutes are approved. Sometimes what we'll try to do is, in a situation like yours, where you're, you really want to get operating as quickly as you can, we can try to speed that up a little bit by getting you onto the council agenda a little quicker with a waiver of that seven days. In this case, it's going to take you more than seven days to get to that council meeting anyway, so it's not going to benefit you to have that waiver. So we were just trying to speed things up for you a bit if we could.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
But in any case, you have gotten approval from us. This will go to City Council now. You'll go through the same process with them, a study meeting and a regular meeting, and they will make the final determination for your waiver use. But that meeting should be coming up here in the next few weeks, I would imagine. The Planning Department will let you know, or the City Council Office will let you know when that meeting has been scheduled, okay?
Yes, sir. So I have to, just to be clear, we have two more meetings?
Yes, with City Council.
With the City Council.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, we're, what we do is, we're giving an approving recommendation to them. So we've done the homework on your, on your property, we've, we've talked to you, and we're recommending that this be approved, but ultimately, City Council makes that final decision.
Yes, sir.
All right?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes care of item number one on our agenda. We move on to item number two, Mr. Secretary.
Petition 2025-06-02-14 submitted by 8KK Massage Spa requesting waiver use approval under sections 3.10 and 6.37 of Livonia zoning ordinance as amended to operate a massage establishment at 31410 Joy Road located at the northwest corner of Merriman Road and Joy Road in the southeast quarter of section 34.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Uhazi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This request is to operate a massage establishment at the northwest corner of Joy and Merriman Road. The existing zoning is C1, local business. Adjacent properties across Merriman are residentially zoned N1 neighborhood. West is also residential, zoned N1. To the south of Joy Road is a BP gas station, which is located in Westland. To the north is a residential property, zoned N1 as well. And to the southeast corner across Joy and Merriman is a 7-Eleven, which is located in Westland. The property size is approximately 8,407 square feet, with 70 feet of frontage on Merriman Road and 120 feet on Joy Road. The building measures approximately 1,344 square feet. And some history on the site is that in 1955, the site was approved as a residential slash medical office, and since then, has operated under three different practices. Additionally, the parcel has been rezoned several times, as the ordinance has changed to comply with continued office use. Massage establishments are permitted with a waiver use under section 6.37 of the zoning ordinance, and they must be located 400 feet from another massage establishment, as well as 400 feet from a school, place of worship, daycare, library, or playground. The hours of operation are limited from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The only plan submitted with this was a site plan, was a floor plan, excuse me, it shows a reception waiting area, kitchen room, and three massage rooms. There are two bathrooms located in the building, one in the hallway, and the second in a, a third massage room. No formal site plan was submitted, but no changes are proposed to the, proposed to the building or landscaping. As for parking, parking for massage establishment requires one space for 150 square feet of floor area. This site would require seven spaces. Additionally, the site landscaping requires two trees, one flowering ornamental tree, and 12 shrubs along Merriman. It would require three trees, one ornamental tree, and 21 shrubs along Joy. And between the commercial and residential, the zoning ordinance requires a six-foot masonry wall or fencing of 20 feet with a opaque fence and a 20-foot green belt between the commercial and residential zonings. With that, Mr. Chairman, I also have some correspondence.
Oh, please, yes. Would you like to read that?
From the Engineering Division, "In accordance with the request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time, but would like to note the following items. One, subject parcel is assigned the address 31410 Joy Road. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact this department once approvals have been obtained. Two, the existing parcel is currently serviced by public sanitary sewer and water main. Utility service information has not been submitted with the drawings, but we do not believe there will be any adverse effects from the proposed project. Should any revisions to the existing service leads be required, the owner will need to submit drawings to determine if engineering department permits will be required. Three, any disturbances within the Merriman or Joy Road right-of-ways will require permits from the Wayne County Department of Public Works." Signed David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From the Fire Department, "This office has reviewed the site plan submitted in conjunction with a request to renovate a building on the property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to this proposal. A further detailed plan review will take place when the division receives an official plan set." Signed Brian Kukula, Fire Marshal. From the Police Department, "I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have no objections to the proposal." Signed Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. From the Treasury Office, "All taxes have been paid on this property." Signed Susan Nash, Levodya City Treasurer. And finally, we received a letter. "Let it be known that we oppose this waiver for a massage spa on the corner of Joy and Merriman. These owners have already made it clear that they do not respect this property by not plowing snow, not mowing grass for weeks at a time, and leaving heaps of trash laying around for weeks. They left multiple junk couches in their parking lot for weeks slash months. Many boxes and other trash have blown out of their lot into ours and into the right-of-way. I do not want the kinds of customers they would have hanging out in their yard. It's already been a problem that the old business owners used to smoke and smell filled our yard. All of the neighbors are houses, and we like it quiet. It will definitely lower property taxes, or values." Signed Chris Bacon.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Uhazi. Is there any questions for planning staff? Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Uhazi, at our planning session, the petitioner failed to submit a site plan and landscape plan, and I see from your notes that stole the case.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Petitioner is in our audience, I believe. If you'd like to come to our podium, you can address us.
Hi, good evening.
Hello, afternoon. My English is, try it easy, okay? My English is a little bit.
Okay, we'll try to go easy on you. What's your, what's your name?
Sandy Wong.
Sandy Wong?
Yes.
And what is, can you tell us about your, your petition for massage parlor? What would you like to do at this location?
It's Livonia 3141, their road, Joy Road.
Okay, that's the address? Okay, good. And what would you like, can you tell us about your business a little bit?
Even though we're working for, before in the New York, and the change of hair, new, new change of hair, is want to open the small study beginning.
Okay, so you're looking to start a new business?
Yes.
Okay. And previously, you worked in New York?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, good. Uh, let's see if we have any questions for you, uh, from anyone else. One, let's see if there's some questions. Can you hold on just one moment? Any questions? Mr. Dinaro?
Yeah, can you tell us about, um, more about the business? How many, um, massage chairs or beds are you going to have? Um, what do you expect the traffic to be like? How many people are you going to be serving? Just give us some more information on what the day-to-day operations are going to be.
Uh, upon, the house inside have like a four-chair, is the three, three table, and the two, um, two bathroom, one, one can be shower, and then, three room, three table, I think. Three bed, three room, four-chair, the one sofa in the lobby. Yes.
How many employees will you have? How many workers?
Hmm, not just studying, same just my partner, he, he serve, just the one right now, but not very open, not, not study open right now.
And when you are open, how many workers do you anticipate?
Um, I and my partner, too.
Two?
Yeah.
That's it for me.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bonjero, go ahead.
Hello, um, so you're not planning on doing any improvements outside? You're going to leave it just the way it is? Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, the parking lot's going to stay? The shrubs?
I, parking road, nothing, right now.
Okay. I guess I'm having a hard time with this petition because it seems like, I can't, it's hard to see what you're going to do here, that there's no site plan.
Yes, none, because, uh, need a city home for accept, uh, we don't know, and I tried to calling for someone, make a sign, but, uh, said, uh, hold, hold down, wait a moment.
Okay. It's just, it seems incomplete to me. Um, and then, without doing any improvements, I don't know how you'd make the parking work out there, especially on the east side. Um, but I guess, you know, that answered my question. You're not going to do anything, and that's it. You're just going to take the building as is and see what you can do, right? So I guess, uh, that, yes, that answers that.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Uh, Mr. Dros, I believe, is next.
Thank you. Um, so, one of the comments in the letter was that there should be a wall between your property and your neighbor. Is that something you plan to do, and have you talked with the neighbor about that? Um, on kind of the, yeah, Mr. Yuhaazi's showing it here. On the, the top side of that, is this loads? Yeah, sorry, it's, it's okay. There's supposed to be a wall between your neighbor. Is that something you plan to do? And have you talked with your neighbor?
I don't know.
Okay, I, I, I guess that's.
You mean, it's a parking road? Excuse me, you mean, you mean, is it a parking road, um, puppy, parking road?
Um, there's, it sounds like there's supposed to be a fence or a wall between the properties. So it's just wondering if you're planning to do that, because it does sound like it's required, and if you've had conversations with your property, with your neighbors, and if they would be, um, okay with that.
Hmm, if a parking road, can you, says my, will it be translated?
Yeah, they, I believe the property owner is here. Would you like to come forward, uh, and, and speak to this issue of the wall?
Yeah, I can answer.
Nope.
There's a wooden fence.
You, you can come up to the podium so we can, we can all hear you, sir?
He's up to the property owner. He's.
And, and sir, who are you?
I am, uh, first name Greg, last name Kareem. I am the one that's picture right there that you show, the very next house.
So you're, you're the neighbor?
Right.
Okay.
I'm the one with the wall.
We're, we're looking for the property owner of this property. Are, you are not the property owner of, of this corner, correct?
You're asking me this?
Yes.
I, I'm three one four four zero.
Right.
Right next door to it.
Okay.
I can reach out and touch it almost.
Okay, we'll, we'll have you come up in just a minute to speak, but right now, we're looking for the property owner himself, which is this gentleman right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you asked me to come up, because I was asking about, you were asking about the fence.
No, I, I'm asking about the, for the property owner to come forward, so. It's okay.
Hello.
Hello, good evening.
How are you? Good evening.
And your name is?
Yasin, Yasin.
Okay.
I'm the owner of this, um, building.
Yes.
Livonia, yeah.
And Mr. Yasin, do you understand the question in regards to the need for a wall between you and your neighbors?
Yes.
Okay, so, with, the way the, our zoning ordinance works, our property, or, or ordinances is between a commercial property, which is what you are.
Yeah.
And residential property, which is next door to you, uh, normally, we require that there be some sort of a barrier or wall, fence, wall, whatever, between you and them. Uh, there currently is not one.
No problem.
So would you be willing to add that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I will do whatever you ask. And then Thursday, they're going to fix the parking lot, so the Thursday, they send me message if you want to see, to take a look at it.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, good. That, that, I think was the question that was being asked. Uh, Mr. Dros, you still have the floor. Would you like to ask any additional questions of the property owner?
Mr. Bonjero covered more of the parking lot questions, but mine was more on the wall, so I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, any other questions for, are, are there a petitioner or the property owner, since we have both up there now?
Mr. Chair, sure.
Mr. Karen Magna.
Who's licensed to operate the massage establishment?
Uh, it's my partner.
Your partner?
Yeah, yeah, because she need to work, go back to New York first, the hair is not open right now.
Are they licensed in Michigan?
Uh, New York. I think it's New York.
Are they required to be licensed in Michigan?
Hmm, no, Michigan. Maybe need a change, change hair, is, I'm, we, we ask can be changed.
Okay, excuse me. So the licensed person is, is back in New York, you said. So that leads me to another question. What is happening in that building daily now? What happens there?
Hmm, empty, closed right now.
It's empty right now?
Um, nobody, just, uh, some, uh, before I talking, sofa, chair, some inside.
I notice there's cars parked there throughout the day, morning, afternoon, nighttime. There's a white car that parks there, there's a Texas-plated car that's parked there, just using it as parking lot, or is someone living there?
It's, uh, maybe make a machine broke, not, and, and few days ago, the water machine broke. Need a calling and make a, make a wife, make a, and then make internet, we need, uh, the waiting inside, waiting for some work inside, internet work, water, hot water, maybe, I don't know.
Somebody, you're saying somebody's working in there?
Hmm, right now, no, just, uh, need a calling, make, uh, internet available, wa, hot water available.
Maintenance workers, I think someone, you said?
Excuse me?
Somebody, his car in the parking lot.
Yes, yes.
And there's two cars there just about every day and all hours of the day?
Not, not every day. Just, uh, the day is late, two day late, the machine broke, and, uh, uh, we appointment for eight AM, come for make hot water available, so he, he's wa, waiting inside.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Karen Magna. Any other questions for our petitioner? Okay. No other questions for our petitioner. There, we do have people in our audience that may wish to speak on this. Uh, we had one gentleman that's a neighbor. Uh, were you willing to, or did you want to speak to this petition, sir?
Yes.
Uh, if you'd like to come forward to the podium, ma'am, you can sit down for just a moment.
Okay, thank you.
And good evening, sir. Can we just get your name and address for our record?
Uh, first name Greg, last name Kareem, and it's three one four four zero Joy Road.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kareem. And what would you like to tell us?
Uh, I got, well, I've been writing some stuff down because I didn't, I got the letter about this meeting maybe two weeks ago.
Okay.
And probably for the last month and a half or longer, lot of traffic, lot of people, lot of pa, uh, parking, I don't know, dozen cars a day, maybe. I've seen people there, uh, overnight on several occasions, and I, right from my picture window, I'm watching the losing tigers for the last couple of weeks, and I started just watching. And I've got four pages of just the last week, times, three cars pulling around eight, leave at eight-thirty, eight-forty-five, uh, nine-twenty-two, cars pull in. I've got the colors of the cars, nine-twenty-four, nine-thirty-one, ten-thirty-three. That was Friday, July eighteenth, and I could go on with, uh, yesterday, three cars in the parking lot, uh, eight o'clock, two more pull in. Customer stands at the door texting, then is let in, truck is parked, is middle of the parking lot for twenty minutes only. I've seen other cars pull in, not even park, stay for ten minutes, are gone. And I've been seeing that for weeks now, and I've seen, like, if the bus, is the business open?
It should not be, no.
Open sign in the window, and again, traffic all the time. And so to me, it's like, they're doing business, you know? And, uh, I'm, the, the, the fence that you talked about, okay, that doctor put it up, it collapsed a couple of years ago, and fell on my car, actually, and, you know, he put up a whole new fence, and it's already starting now. I was out there screwing in, some of the boards are coming loose again. So that, and the parking lot there is terrible. I mean, there's holes and holes and stuff, and, uh, again, I see the white car you spoke of is there all the time, is there overnight, sometimes it's there all the way to the late afternoon, comes back, is there overnight, so somebody's staying there. You know, and it could be like, to me, if you're there for a night because you're working on the business or doing some, you know, no big deal, but it's there all the time. And again, I can give you five pages of people, what times they were coming in, what times they were leaving. So, you know, to me, they're already doing business. And I'm also concerned about the high school, because the high school, a block away, you know, so maybe it's more than the four hundred feet, but, you know, it's just a concern I had. And then there's weeds going all along the fence line and against the back wall. Now, as far as I'm concerned, they do keep the, the lawn mowed. It's, it's mowed, you know, every week or two, probably, but the weeds are getting like that high. So, and there's garbage kind of piling up, nothing terrible, but, you know, it's there. So I guess, uh, you know, that's my main concerns, I guess, too, and the hours of operation and that type of stuff. You said from eight to ten, is that seven days a week that they can be open? I don't know, I'm asking. And, uh, you know, it's always been quiet. I've lived there twenty years, very quiet, and now I'm seeing a lot of traffic. And I guess those are my main concerns.
Okay.
I don't know if I got anything written down. Now, basically, basically, though, I mean, these are a list of cars, just in the last, on Friday, July eighteenth. Okay? And then the same thing, I got on Sunday, the twentieth, the twenty-second, I've got probably eight, ten cars parked in there and that, so.
I think we're seeing the same thing, so.
Okay. Well, that's, that's.
Sir, we can't, if you want to come up and speak.
No, I think that covered pretty much most of what I've got to bring up about it anyway, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
All right, thanks for the time.
Would you like to come up and, uh, speak to this issue?
I, that's all I really have to say. Uh, the next neighbor over, next to Greg.
We, we need you on the microphone, just because we do have a, a vast TV audience. I'd like to hear you as well. Thank you.
My name's John Terrell. I'm at three one four five four, right next to Greg, on the west side of Greg.
Okay, thank you.
I've been here for thirty years, and my concern is a massage parlor in a residential neighborhood in Livonia? Shouldn't that be like down on Michigan Avenue or something? And, uh, that just sits wrong with me. High school kids back and forth all day long going to Franklin High School. I don't know if I'd want my kids walking past that. With sex trafficking and everything that's making the headlines now, it's just, it's, this isn't winning me over at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your comments. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, certainly.
Yeah, um, is it a residential?
At the podium, please.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Oh, we got to make it official for the TV.
Yeah, we, we do. We need to keep a record.
All right, I'm just, I was concerned, like, is this a residential, and is it a so, a, a business? Like, can someone spend the night there? And they cannot.
It's commercial, so they cannot.
Okay, because I, I'm definitely, I mean, someone's there on a regular basis, so I just wanted to get that confirmed, because I didn't know if it could go be both things.
Right, that's a good question. I appreciate you asking that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, if there's no one else in our audience wishing to speak, uh, I'm going to go back to the owners. Is there anything that you would like to say to us before we make our decision? Either of you? If there's anything you'd like to say, you can come forward. Hello, Ms. Wang. Anything else that you'd like to tell us before we make our decision?
Um, sorry, I, I'm, I'm not sure I understand, but, uh, said, uh, too many people car, road parking, and talking, some people come. I don't know, I need to, I need, uh, say, I have camera, I say, I can see the camera first, because it's not only my business, so I need no more detail. I know hair too much about the people saying what happened. It's okay?
Right, so, so what, what, uh, one of the neighbors has seen, there's a lot of car activity, a lot of people coming and going from your business location.
Just my friend tell me have some machine people come and make internet, some hot water. I, I don't know more, just she called me come for, uh, for this seven PM, for this. I don't know too much, sorry.
So your, your partner is probably more involved?
I need, uh, I, I need to let her know first.
Okay, all right, very good. Well, thank you for those comments.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, with that, if there's no other questions or comments from anyone, uh, I'm, I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bonjero.
I'd like to, uh, offer a denying resolution. This request to operate a massage establishment at three one four one zero Joy Road is denied for the following reasons. One, the petitioner has failed to comply with all general standards and requirements outlined in sections one point zero two and one three point one three of the zoning, Livonia zoning ordinance. Number two, the petitioner has not adequately established a need for the proposed use in the, in the immediate area. Number three, the petitioner has failed to comply with landscaping and screening requirements outlined in sections ten point zero three of the Livoni, Livonia zoning ordinance. Number four, the petitioner has not sufficiently demonstrated that the proposed use would be compatible with and in harmony with the surrounding uses in the area, and, number five, the proposed use is contrary to the goals and objectives of the zoning ordinance, which, among other things, are intended to ensure the suitability and appropriateness of uses.
Is there support?
Support. I have a motion to deny, made by Mr. Bonjero, supported by Mr. Dros. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Dros.
Aye.
Mrs. Dinaro.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Wulsho.
Votes aye. Motion has been passed. This is a motion to deny. The petitioner will have ten days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Uh, and that takes care of the public hearing section of our agenda. Uh, the only other item on our agenda, Mr. Secretary, is approval of minutes.
And that is the minutes of the one thousand two hundred and thirty-second public hearing and regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on July first, two thousand and twenty-five.
All members were present with the exception of Ms. Dinaro and Mr. Dros. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mr. Long and supported by Mr. Ventura. If there's no objection, I think we can show five on the, uh, minutes. I don't see any objections from anybody, and that's with the Dinaro and Dros abstaining. Uh, that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
By Ms. Dinaro, supported by Mr. Bonjero. That's Dinaro and Bonjero on a motion to adjourn. If there's no objections, I think we can show seven on that. Objections noted, so we'll show seven on that. And that takes us, uh, that is the adj, end of our meeting. I'd like to thank Livonia Television's staff for bringing this meeting to the community, and I will be adjourning this meeting at seven forty-eight PM. Good night, Livonia.